I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and of equal, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty.
Supervisor Ty Rosberg is what joined us?
Yes.
Can you hear us, Ty? Everything good? Alright, thanks for joining in. Everybody's had a chance to look over the agenda. There are no conflicts with Chris, correct? I'll consider that approved. And a monitor, will you read the previous minutes of our last meeting, please?
July 9th, 2024, the Board of Supervisors met at 9:00 AM with Gene Hyden, Chair Presiding, Members President Schultz, Dozar, Hyden, Mulbauer, and Rosberg. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, the Board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. The Board approved Recorder's Quarterly Report for April 24th through June of 24th. The Board approved the hiring of Richard Nelson, Part-Time Maintenance Employee, One Engineer's Office. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve the bargaining unit administrative employee wage rates effective June 21, 2024. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Rosberg, to approve the purchase of 10,000 ton of maintenance gravel from Halit Materials Wall Lake Pit, price of $9 per ton. Motion passed unanimously. The Board discussed with Jacob Langholtz, IT Director, the mini-split for the IT room at the city center estimate $9,750. No action was taken at this time. Nathaniel Piscina from Clear Gulf spoke to the Board about services they offer for budgets, better planning and simplifying. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Rosberg, to for the approval and disallow of the 2023.24 Disabled Veterans Homestead and Military Credit Applications. Motion passed unanimously. The Board discussed generator to power the city center. No action was taken at this time. The Board discussed sick leave accrual. No action was taken at this time. The Board discussed the secondary roads clothing allowance. No action was taken at this time. On motion duly seconded, the Board adjourned. 11:57 AM, agendas for the next meeting are posted in Bill with the Board House on Friday, 4:30 PM.
Any corrections to the minutes for the vice board? So those of the new supervisors reports, we'll go ahead and start with a few, Dave?
Yeah, I did. I had Region 12 last week. We had, we started with your executive board meeting was first one. Just went through vouchers for approval. The one thing we did in that one, we had to change and then bend them to IRP work plans and loan agreements because of state law changes so that we're in in line with what the changes were. What I did for some of those loan agreements is a raise, it was $250,000 cap. Some of those loans and that raised it up to $400,000. Housekeeping we did on that one else. That one, and then we had our development corporation meeting following that, which we did approve a loan for, they had, it was an application for, it's called Soap LLC in Lakeview. So they're building a kind of a sports bar, pizzeria, firehouse pizza type deal. Couple blocks came off of Lakeview. See, it looks to the lake. Kind of really, they're gonna have a rough town bar that looks like it's right off the east side of the lake. That kind of, that cove in there.
But they started building that.
They, they have.
Because during that, we just up there.
So it's new construction?
New construction. So that loan got.
So north of the marina, kind of.
Right off the east side of that, the way COVID is at.
Right, right, right.
You know, there's another loan application for our meat poultry loan fund, which is for Yetter Locker, Lakeview. We did not do anything with that because we were waiting for the loan review committee to view that.
What do they want to do?
Yetter Locker.
Yetter Locker, just uh.
I think they were kind of moving. It sounds like where they are currently at in Yetter, it's no longer compliance with the DNR, so they physically have to move because of all the waste water. They're looking at where, where they can build, where, what's available. But we took no action on that. Typically, we, we don't take action until the longer due committee. Well, true, that's, that's it.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
And then we did have our regular council of government meeting. And that, we went through and went through our fiscal report. Mark did that. We went to our local assistant report with Chris did. He had, we had to update our transportation improvement program. If anybody wants to look through that, I went over some of the projects on that. Which we did have to approve that in that this meeting. Then we had our executive director report and our transit report. So things are moving forward. Working on multiple projects, housing projects, rehab projects. Actuation has been moving right along, through their surveying and keeping up on that. Our, we have kind of gotten some new vehicles in, which Matt just told us about during COVID, of course, and there's a lag on getting some of our vehicles. But now it's kind of got over that. My lies.
You know, they have that free on the taxi day, I think it's Hy-Vee, yeah, over in Carroll.
Yeah.
Is there a way that we could have that same service in Dennis? And how would we implement that or how?
Who? You know who? Because I think the city of Carroll themselves helped fund some of those taxi rides.
Okay. I think that's just a great idea. That way people that have to save their free ones.
I'd have to ask Matt about that.
Think maybe that's what we should discuss.
But I do think somehow the city of Carroll allows her help subsidize some of those rides.
So it would start with the city.
City, I mean, to talk together.
I'll talk to them and see what she thinks about that. Ask if they want to get on the agenda. I think it's a nice service. It just seems so friendly to have one day a week and go buy your groceries and after you know.
One day a week, one day a month.
Yeah, one day. I think it's one day a week.
One day a week.
It was one day a week. But we can make it. I just thought when I heard that a couple minutes ago, I thought that's a great idea.
Do they have a certain pickup point, you know?
I'm not sure. I'll try to find out more information, but I think it'd be a good thing to have in our larger communities to get people. But I still, by those reasons, I'd use one of their passes for that.
Or you look at days like the last couple of days when it's 100 degree heat index and now people have to walk from that side of Dennis into Walmart.
Yeah.
Especially if they're older.
Yeah, yeah, or just say, you know. Even in perfect health on a day like that, to have to walk up and buy your necessities and your prescriptions and things like that.
I doubt, definitely something we can look into.
I think we should.
That's about it for Region 12. A good meeting, a lot of information, a lot of.
Always is. Did you have anything last week you wanted to talk about?
Yeah, just, I do, a quick question for Terry is on the clerk of court report that we did. And it says amount collected and the next to it is a column that says dispersed. Does it, who's it dispersed to? Does it disperse the county? Or why do they have that dispersed?
I don't know if I know. We got to ask Karen that.
Alright. At a Wesco meeting last night and their year end ended on June 30th. They had a yearly profit of $710,440. So that is good. They did close on the lot that they purchased from Jim gone and they're gonna build a house on. And they closed, they purchased a house on 16th Street that is four bedrooms, potentially could be five, which is gonna fit right in. They purchased price on that was $270,000. And that was the exact amount of the grant that they got earlier in the year. One thing that they noticed, or not noticed, but a change that they see coming through the state with all these changes that are happening is falling under one umbrella is going to be disabled and aging are gonna fall under the same umbrella and they're not sure exactly what that means moving forward. You know, I don't know if that's, I'm assuming that's through the HHS is where it's at, but they don't know exactly how that's gonna play out. It's supposed to be, I think, June or July 1 of 2025 when that exactly makes the official change, but they're just unaware of exactly what that's gonna be.
Do they think it'll be better? I mean, you kind of like substance use and mental health, you know, instead of having these lines.
That's right. They're not sure. I guess they're just kind of wait and see exactly what it means. But Clay just mentioned that that's gonna be a change that they're gonna go through.
A lot of that I guess do with Medicaid and the Medicare services that you lose and.
And because of that change, I mean, one of the things that Wesco, I think, potentially sees down the road is that maybe an opportunity for them. Since they care for people, a lot of people 24/7, is that are there opportunities out there for them in the aging population that aren't ready or diagnosed to go to a nursing home and they're at home and they're alone and they don't have, you know, kids close by, is there an opportunity for them to fill maybe a void in our county that we have with the aging population? And so that's something that next year, I think, moving forward, once they figure out what these changes are, is can Wesco step in and try to fill some of those voids that we see?
For somebody who's not disabled, but was on Medicaid, hard to be able to be old enough to go on Medicare, there is kind of a gap in there for some services is what used to come, you know, to the board's.
Saying Medicaid.
Medicaid.
If you're not poor enough for Medicaid.
Right, right, right.
And, and, and you're single. You know, that's the thing is, I mean, being in the insurance business and selling long-term care insurance, we know we give a couples discount because, and a couple doesn't have to be husband or wife, it could be two brothers, two sisters, two people the same age living in the house. Because we know as long as another person's there, they're gonna keep them home a lot longer than if they were alone.
Craig, were you on the board at the time Wesco went gooey, the ice was on board or did you go off by then? He's on it, supervising. I had breakfast with him the other day and he was asking who was on it now and I saw Craig is on it and said set up all the boards he served on and it's, I know that he just really enjoyed Wesco and that a lot of good things happening.
I mean, that's what I get from the people. Sir, Stephanie Houseman from Carroll County. And she has said, first, my first day there, she was there, she said, this is my favorite board, all the boards that I have to serve on being a Carroll County Supervisor is. So I understand that sentiment. One of the things that they did start for, at the bank shop is Thursday night, they do an ice cream social now, if people are interested. And they are setting up a mobile application for orders through the bank shop, so you can order on your phone. And they are looking for a new board member. We had one resign, so if anybody, I guess, has name of someone, something you think would be good at that, certainly let me know. I'd be happy to pass on their name. And something I guess I wanted to add since it is only 9:15 is that, I don't know how many of you guys read through all of those four emails that Colin sent us that had all of the stuff that the Iowa Utilities Board, which is now the IUC, the Iowa Utilities Commission, as of July 1st, they changed their name, or the governor changed their name. But, you know, all the different types of ordinances that we looked at as far as zoning, land use, development, I think Ty had talked about that before, but here's some words that the IUV or IUC said in their ruling. And this was quote, said, "The Board, which is them, determines how the pipeline siting will interact with preset, with present and future land use and zoning, not necessarily how it complies, if and to what extent it complies since decision for the Board." So whether you have a land use or a zoning ordinance in place, the pipeline does not have to comply with what your ordinance says. It just has to interact with your ordinance. And as far as how much of that interaction or how much it complies is the determination of the Iowa Utilities.
For a whole committee?
Not for the county.
Three people get to decide that over.
That's exactly what, that's exactly what, what they stated. And I know we talked about, you know, the file 199, how that changed kind of the land use that we were, direction that we were thinking of going. And then we were talking about abandoning, what happens if they abandon pipelines? Is there anything that we can do? And the Board agrees with Summit that abandoning in place is the default selected by pipeline companies and farmers alike as to not disturb the soil again. Iowa Code 479 E32-4 states, quote, "The landowner may require the pipeline company to remove any pipe or pipeline facility remaining on their property." So the Board says that they agree that to leave it in place is the proper way to abandon the pipeline. However, the landowner may require the pipeline company to remove it because that's already in Iowa code. And.
I think the question on that for some folks that are concerned about it would be, you know, they're paying tax on it. Now, as, you know, as a improvement, infrastructure improvement, if they were getting a revenue, that was one of the selling points of the pipeline is the money that we would get from if going to our county, correct? For that. So when they abandoned it, do they just forget about collecting property tax on that? So the farmer who's left with that, that goes away?
Well, the farmer never has to pay the proper tax because the farmer doesn't own the pipeline.
Well, they're abandoned. I think that's where some of that gray area is though. Maybe I missed something. If so, the summit abandons it, kind of like gave it to the farmer, is the county going to just say, oh, there's nothing to see here, no pipeline anymore, so don't worry about it? Or is that gonna become an issue between the assessor and the farmer who now has that valuable pipeline in their ground? And before it was worth half a million dollars, does it's abandoned? Do we agree to forgive any taxes? That would be due on that. Because that was always an issue with towers also, but they got decommissioned and they were still there. And they no longer even be giving the tax credit or the, what did they work out where they don't have to pay as much tax? That to me are the things that are like gray area that, that people have thought about, but are they addressing that, making it sure?
I didn't see them address that.
But I don't think that's gonna.
I mean, I'm assuming for us, I guess it'll have to be a bridge or a cross when we get there, but I can't imagine the county would ever charge the farmer any taxes for a pipeline that he doesn't own. I just can't see that happening.
Never owned it, so they're gonna.
If, I mean, if Summit, if Summit.
Maybe it'll just be at a lesser, the value will go down because it's unused. And I, I don't know if it would maintain any value at all, being unused. You know what I mean? I don't know that.
Nobody.
I don't know if the Department of Revenue would have a voice on that because they kind of, they kind of take care of the utilities, the miles, the like, like power line miles. That's how, that's how utility tax for that kind of service excuse me, is taxed, is paid by the utility company is their miles of line. So I don't, you know, this is different, obviously, because.
So there's a day that tax burden would be summits until the Department of Revenue determined that it was of more value. So the farmer would never, the landlord would never be.
Right. Because I don't think the farmer would ever take ownership of the pipeline.
Just trying to, I think through the, I didn't know that they thought of it, the folks that have it.
Oh, I'm sure.
And I would be thinking of it if we want, have a decommissioned ordinance in there saying, oh, no need for that, no, nothing to see here, sorry. But now I find out that I have a tax burden.
I would assume it'd be handled the same as any underground utilities, fiber, phone, I mean, it's all taxed. The company pays taxes on it, so when it's abandoned.
What if they eat it over to them?
Abandoned, delicatious.
And you don't want it.
Everywhere, right?
Okay, alright, just a thought.
Can I weigh in on that quick? Say, what if, none of us have really seen a lot of contracts. Maybe there's something where that pipeline reverts to the ownership of the farmer in some of these private contracts. That might be an avenue that we gotta explore, you know, then, then it would be their responsibility. I don't know. I mean, I don't know if that's wrote in. That's just a thought I was having as you guys were talking.
Those are the thoughts.
Good point, Ty. It might, it might be in those easements, might be written in there.
Which goes back to landowner individual rights to sign or not sign that and the devil's some of the details, so.
They need, landlords maybe need to make note of that and have that checked out.
I'm very sorry.
How about if you got your property taken from you through eminent domain and they decide they don't want it anymore and now something you never wanted becomes your problem? No, I'm just thinking way far down, but that's kind of what all this is, helps me think of.
And the last thing I wanted to add about the, what the Iowa Utilities Commission wrote that we discussed was, they said, "Lastly, several witnesses testified Summit Carbon's proposed project would likely, quote, permanently affect housing development, land use values, local tax-based tourism, and the migration of residents to a county." The county's Hamilton Direct, page 19, "The Board does not agree with these statements. While it is true, no permanent structures could be built in Summit Carbon's permanent easement, the Board finds the jump made in the witnesses' testimony to this fact to be exaggerated. As shown in Chovanek rebuttal, Exhibit 3, development can and does happen in and around all types of pipelines, both hazardous and non-hazardous in the state of Iowa. The Board is unwilling to affirm the issues faced by counties, development, taxes, migration, et cetera, would be directly related to Summit Carbon's proposed hazardous liquid pipeline when the evidence shows development does occur despite the presence of a pipeline." So, I mean, we talked about all of those issues as a possible ordinance. And you could see that based on that thought that they had, I mean, there's no way we could have ever devised something that would have worked.
No. If you had ordinances in place, they're saying that those.
We don't have to comply with them.
They don't have.
We just have to interact. So I didn't know if you guys all read through them, but when I read through all those pages, that's the stuff that kind of jumped out at me based on what we had talked about. So I just wanted to bring that to the board.
Appreciate that very much.
We explored multiple, multiple different avenues of what we could, couldn't do. We put the time into trying to do our due diligence.
And moving forward, I guess that I have been reading past supervisors from 1892 to 1893. And so if you ever have time, there's some very interesting stuff, but I just want to do one thing because this is about the auditor position. And evidently, the job description of the auditor has changed in a hundred and thirty some years. Because this says, in the, in the minutes dated Friday, September 9th, 1892. And a lot of times, the supervisors didn't meet Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they met.
Oh, they weren't helping us.
This, this says in the minutes, "On motion, the watch found on the body of an unknown man killed near Manila to be kept by the auditor until called for by parties entitled to it or until disposed of by the Board of Supervisors." So I don't know if you've been asked to hold the watch of a dead person, where's that?
I thought I was a suspect. Someone from Manila?
That's what they did. Watch off an individual before is they would give it to the auditor to hold.
OMG.
Until the supervisor.
Until the supervisor.
OMG. Was the auditor not elected back then or? Just saying, I'm just, I, you know.
That's great information.
Yeah, I'm sure, I never thought I would read that in the minutes of the Board of Supervisors. It's there.
Well, there's another, thank you for the.
I guess there's literally nothing the auditor won't.
You're right.
Other job that's done.
I found that, I was, as long as it doesn't smell like your phone, I'm okay. Paul and cattle winner.
Ty, what can you add to the conversation?
Well, I, just to start off by, I got a, we got, I don't believe I all got another email in regards to another fold of possible ordinances
Yes.
to the pipeline.
Yes.
For the surveying part of it. And I just kind of read through it quick. You were talking about.
The Bremer County?
Yeah. And it, and I'm not, maybe it's not a bad idea, kind of highlights that the surveyors need to have a written paper of the landowners saying they can enter their property and such that would just be another formality, but when we remember back to the inception of this pipeline, we were getting complaints of people just tromping across the property lines. So maybe that's something we could look into.
I would like to.
Forward that to Colin and have that, and and maybe it's already superseded by IUV, IUC as well, you know, but.
Why the change to IUC? What, what did?
I don't know. I just read that on July 1st, the change that they are now called commissioners. The three people are commissioners and it's the Iowa Utilities Commission.
Probably the same.
I'm not sure why.
Usually.
Commissioners seems more like action.
But I'll just forward that to Colin and have him.
Okay, I got it right here.
Are you gonna forward that to him?
Yeah.
Who sent that? I didn't, this guy right here, this Robert.
From Robert Nazario. Nazario.
I do appreciate him keeping a similar.
Talked with Paul yesterday, totally unrelated to what I'm gonna bring up, but he said that he forward and who, with the Jax vetted the engineer description and all that.
Yep.
And the only thing he said was missing was our Jack question, why there wasn't a salary range on there. So I asked Paul, but Monona County just hired their new engineer and this is just food for thought. That was $140,000. Woodbury County couldn't get anybody at $160,000. Right for, so just throwing some numbers out. Counties around us that are in the same kind of spot. And it took Monona County year and a half or longer to get somebody, so. And Paul stated he thought there would be more interest out there, but he says, not saying Crawford County won't draw a lot of interest. He said, just if it's, Woodbury County can't get anybody, so that's kind of concerning to him. Woodbury's a big.
Big, isn't it?
And maybe that scared the people a lot going on in Woodbury County.
Right.
Yeah, so I just thought I'd bring that information up for thought. So I don't know if that's a place we need to kind of, is there a way on salary?
Well, if it's too low.
But again, you, you know, it depends on experience as well.
Right.
So.
But can you say both? Can you have a range and?
Based on, yeah. Yeah, maybe that's the way to handle.
I mean, I don't know. I'm not a HR person, so.
I told him I'd bring it up. And then last week, I mentioned Paul, I think that we should have a range. I mean, Paul, Paul put the initial one.
He kind of thought, well, I guess, I guess bonded.
It did not. They kind of just, you know.
Right. Jeff responded, what's that? He was surprised there wasn't a range. He didn't say we have to.
Right, right.
He don't say we have to, but maybe. I don't know either. I'm kind of like, if you're interested, you're gonna ask them questions.
Right.
I just feel like if you.
Somebody comes in with a whole bunch of experience.
Yeah, so you make it too low, they're not gonna call and make it too high, then you're kind of stuck with that. So we're gonna pay $165,000. And this person has no, you know, I think you're interested, you're interested.
Anytime I think you apply for a job and the salary range is 120 to 160, you're expecting the 160.
That's right.
If you're offering the 120, it's like, well, what's wrong with me? Why do I get the lower?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
When I would think anybody was applying with, see what the county's around and what they're getting paid and have an idea in their mind of what the range is.
Well, they could look up and see what Paul's actually making if they really wanted to do that, if you're a researcher. So I don't know.
Yeah, we don't have to put it in.
I, I think it's.
I can see both sides. Because once you throw something out, you're kind of stuck with that.
I say believe it without it, I saw.
And then last what it was, I met over with Carroll Control at City Center.
I remember.
And we discussed. Uh, and we discussed the placement of the new A C units. And, uh, leaving room for a generator, trying to get all that coordinated with Todd, right?
Yeah.
And, uh, he didn't seem that to be a problem. Uh, might have to get creative with stacking the, you know, outside units or whatever. It's no big deal.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm sure there's some, some kind of rack, you know.
Yeah, 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 because it just looks hideous out there now. There's a lot, I don't know, a lot of garbage and flex back there.
Oh, I'm sure, from the wind blowing.
Well, no, there's like paint cans and ladders. Um, but anyways, that's beside, that was just one of the side effects of me going back there and looking at the A C units.
Do you think that's our painter's stuff?
Well, I kind of would think so.
I would too. If we had heard any interest on the annexed building.
I will check with Rita today.
I did reach out to our electrician this morning to see how they're coming along with the rough end and they plan on, they must have a big job over at painting that, uh, he said John Deere, but I think it's Ballardville Industries. It does a lot of R and D for John Deere, though I think, he said they're getting that fixed up, so they plan on being here later this week to get the electrical rough end at least started. And I forwarded Jake's requirements for his server marine that he needs, so he can wire that up as well, so. Trying to keep that on rolling. And I haven't heard anything back from B M U on relocating the gas meters and cleaning that mess up. Getting rid of the four meters and putting one meter in, I hope you have, and Dave's absence, Dave was kind of spearheading that charge, but he is off with the medical reasons, so.
We'll have to pick it up then.
Yeah, I, I've been, I, they lie to talk.
And see if there's anything on there that you're ready with yet.
And I, the, uh. Thank you, so good. But did you get the R P Ms?
I did today.
Okay. With the generator, right, perfect.
So, that's good.
And the mini split, I did talk with Todd in regards to that, what Jake had brought up last week, over the, over the mini split. And he says, I can get you a cheaper one, but it's not as dependable.
Who's that?
Todd with Carol.
Oh, now this is dependable.
Yeah, he said these have a long history of being very dependable.
Well, there's a lot at stake if it's not dependable when you've got all your.
That's kind of what his point was, is I can base, you know, I feel comfortable with this one, the other one. And he said, what are you protecting with that, so.
So, to go with the Mitsubishi.
Yeah. I'll get a thousand seven hundred dollar one, so.
All right.
And I, Jake asked me this morning, I told him to put it back on next week's agenda, to take action on that.
It's good, yeah, because we can't move forward without any of those things, the painting and all, the rearranging of cabinets and all that.
And maybe we'll be, you know, whenever, oh, if they get there next week or whatever, start with the A C agreement for the furnace update, so.
Right, sounds good.
That I, yes, that are meeting Friday at Cherokee.
Catholic, right?
Yep, yep.
That it? Ty, you got anything that you want to talk about here? Can we get Paul in here, or?
Paul.
Yeah, I got.
Excuse me, Paul's not coming.
I just got a couple of things. So, uh, here's a good point of interest. They actually got three streetcars down here in Tampa, and them streetcars are from Ida Grove. So, that's kind of cool.
So, they're driving towards, they got a nice lot of streetcars.
Yeah, yeah, so that's pretty cool. So, I had a little bit of taste of home right down here in Tampa. Anyway, uh, I was talking to a bunch of supervisors that are dealing with solar issues, just like we are. And, uh, had some really interesting stuff. There's, there's a lot of them, especially in the urban areas, that are pushing for solar over parking lots. So, it also shades your car, why it's generating power for everybody else. So, I thought there might be some interesting ways that we could kind of just, as we're driving around the county, look for areas that maybe would not steal ag land and create places for solar fields. Uh, I did talk to a commissioner from out in Virginia, and they have created an ordinance out in that county that they actually only authorize two percent of all ag line, excuse me, ag land in the county to be authorized for solar fields. So, basically puts a limit on the ground that they can use. So, basically, once two percent's been used up of ag land, that's it. And, uh, I thought that was pretty interesting, and I remember just some of the highlights that really stuck out to me as you guys were talking. And I wanted to make sure to bring up, I mean, I'll obviously be able to give you a little better report next week when I get everything together, so I don't bore you with all the news, but, uh, uh, when you were talking about the engineer stuff, you know, and somebody said they weren't H R, you know, remember, we could bring Jack in for free. Let's not ever forget that. Uh, that's about all I got, unless you got any questions. I'm sitting here at the airport. When I scream from my plane, I'll probably check out if you guys aren't done yet.
Probably should catch that plane out and find that.
Stay on his way home or on his way out?
Home.
Home.
Okay.
Home.
I was gonna say, because if you were just gonna stay there, I have a, a cousin, Douglas Dobzark, that owns Cycle Brewing in Tampa, Florida, where you can sign by there.
I would have, I'd have known that. I'd have probably drug a bunch of supervisors and commissioners with me.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. So, Paul's not coming today?
Ben.
Oh, Ben's coming on, all right, all right, very good. All right, so if Ty's done, uh, we could.
Anything?
No, I didn't go without a town sign, I did not.
You have the idea of a resolution for the general ballot?
We could, we could. Uh, do we want to go ahead and discuss, uh, the resolution, uh, to place the clerk trustee question on the general ballot?
Sure.
All right, let's get that one out of the way.
Yeah. I don't know if you read it or saw it in your packet.
I did.
Um, uh, we have the opportunity to put this on the general ballot. I can't remember if it's, if we can do it every, every general ballot. Can't remember that. Anyway, it's been a few years since we've done it. Um, so it, um, the language is.
New or different?
It's not something new, but it puts it on, so we have, we have, um, twenty townships. Twenty or twenty-five? Twenty, I think. Anyways, yeah, that's what I was thinking. Okay, twenty. And it's about fifty-fifty as to those that are elected and those that are appointed. Um, the appointed ones, we always get, um, suggestions from the current trustees, um, as far as replacements for vacancies. Um, so, and what I mean by elected or appointed, that would be the trustees and the clerk are either elected or appointed. Um, it's hard to get people to put their names on the ballot for those positions. Um, and if there aren't any, then we may get one or two, and we end up drawing names out of a hat to break a tie, because they don't, it doesn't, you know, there aren't very many write-in votes for those positions.
Oh.
They're, yeah.
So, we have to do this township specific, so.
Yeah, absolutely. The resolution won't be, but we will, we will only put it on the ballot for the townships that need it.
Okay, so we just can't pass a broad one that gives us the ability just to appoint.
Right.
A trustee whenever it opened, whenever it's open for whatever township.
No.
We can't do that.
No.
Okay.
I mean, it has to, it, so, so this language will go on the ballot. They have the opportunity to vote for it or vote against it.
But for a specific township.
Yes, it'll be for a specific township.
All right.
Okay.
What action did we take eight years ago or whatever, or we could have started, if we started, filling by to, 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 we just did some.
We've been doing that a long time. It's been fifty-fifty for a long time.
Okay.
We may have added a township or two back then. I can't remember.
I just remember taking some.
We're trying to get more of them to be appointed, just because of, you know, it's hard to get them, we get their names on the ballot, and it's always more effective to have a name on the ballot. We do send out, Michelle sends out a letter to the townships every July, mid-July, which she just did it this last Friday. Um, it is for their financial paperwork. We also include, um, on the years that there's a general election, um, the affidavit of candidacies, so those people that are gonna be on the ballot can fill out those affidavits of candidacy.
So, what we would be doing today, just putting, passing it, put it on the general ballot.
Yep.
And allowing those townships to vote whether or not they want to play.
Yeah, they get to make the ultimate decision, but we just need by resolution, um.
But it would only be those people in that township that would vote.
Right, exactly, yeah, exactly, exactly. And that's why we end up with so many ballot styles in the general election, because, uh, partially because of the townships, they all get, if they're an elected position, they, they have a different ballot style, so.
Exactly.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to the clerk trustee question on the general ballot.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? Is a resolution, so I'll call by name. Ty?
I.
Right.
I.
Dave?
Hi.
Ty?
I heard it.
Hi, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Chair of the tie, a resolution has been cast beyond the ballot.
Just interesting, kind of two percent of the acres in Crawford County would be nine dollars, sixteen acres.
Really?
Fourteen, fourteen sections. So, when you say two percent of, so, it's still a pretty big number. I mean, I can't imagine having nine thousand acres covered with solar panels.
No, I was, I thought two percent, that doesn't seem too bad, but we didn't have like that. Thank you for doing the math.
Are you off a zero? Nope. I double checked.
Double check is work.
We have four. You Googled it. Four hundred, oh, I get there. Twenty times thirty-six times six hundred and forty comes up with four hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred acres.
Oh.
Is that all ag though?
That's all ag, that's just the whole county in general, so it's, I mean, it would be less if we just did the.
Right, but just, I did, right, got you.
So.
But just put a number to kind of put it in perspective.
All right. Uh, do we have time to discuss and take action on the DHS tax actions?
Yeah.
That should take a while.
Sure.
Hold the front end gets there in a minute, wait a minute. So, what do we have about that?
So, it's action that the board takes every year. Um, I contact DHS to make sure that the, um, two landowners that are currently have suspended taxes are still in their program, in the DHS program.
Uh huh.
Um, so, and they are.
Okay.
Yeah, the Iowa code that pursuant to this is four twenty-seven point nine, um.
Pre-earthing nation.
Okay, so it's a little housekeeping, basically, but then you still are.
Because we're working on tax billing currently, and that's the season that we, we prepare this and verify that that's accurate.
All right, so it's all.
Well, I would make a motion to approve the two tax suspensions that are under requirements. Uh, that's wrong. And they're, uh, devaluable for these suspensions, so.
Do we sign the front? It's D H, well, I don't know. I don't know.
Someday it will be.
That, um, just, it's not that these taxes never have to be paid, that sometime, they will be caught up.
Yeah, so.
They're just being held in limbo with no penalty or anything.
Iowa code, uh, allows it, so.
Yep.
We probably should approve it, so we have a motion starting in a second. Uh, any further discussion? That'll call the vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any posts and sign? Chair of the tie, the suspensions have been approved. Um, go ahead and discuss and take action on the appointment of Luanne Grono to the Veteran Affairs Commission for a three-year term ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven. Uh, he does an excellent job, really.
I move we appoint Luanne Grono to the Veteran Affairs Commission for a three-year term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-seven.
Members.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, I'll call the motion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair of the tie, the witness on for another review, so that is good. All righty. Um, so probably taking care of everything else until, uh.
At the front on the list, you, please.
Oh.
Got it?
Oh.
I mean, her.
Yeah.
Who?
Her.
Jean. It's one here, I got a foot.
You're welcome, thank you. Maybe you can tie it up for him, making sure I get the front and the back. He appreciates it.
Good morning.
Morning, Ben.
Good morning.
Right outside.
Perfect timing. All righty.
How are you?
Good. Like in the cooler weather out there a little bit.
You should have started yesterday.
Wasn't it though? Just stand out there and.
Makes the corner doggy. Corner.
Yeah, the corn doesn't like it. Didn't quite care for it at the fair though.
Yeah, yeah.
Way to forecast, I should find you on the crew was Crawford County, third of the recent.
Yeah.
It will be nice. It's, makes it a lot easier for them, them kids out there with those animals that. They killed the cow and, uh, they had a hot one last week.
Do I get one?
Yeah, sure, Dan.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, so, I'm a great crew that are getting close to finishing up on, uh, U Avenue down there. Uh, they're, uh, probably won't be this week, probably be, uh, first bar next week, they'll be wrapping that up and, uh. And then, uh, just kind of discussing on Monday with, um, might, uh, use some of the great crew guys and try and fix up some of these, uh, old grading projects where we've had a lot of washing and, uh, in Damon's territory where it just, you know, try and, uh, fix some of these areas that he's just not able to get a handle on, need a little more manpower handling some of these washouts that, uh, and, uh, just will use the great crews, uh, work, the others to try and get a head on that, so. And then we're probably looking up, uh, at some point moving up to Jay Avenue, uh, uh, the, I used to use, uh, West, and, uh, and, uh, and, uh, working on that stretch, so that's kind of the tentative plan anyway, but, uh, Sean and I are out looking at old grading projects where we just had those dry conditions the last few years when we were doing them, that, uh, count, but a lot more susceptible to the, you know, the, the rain and washouts, and maybe at the season's end, Jay pulled, so. Trying to get a list of where we're gonna do some fixing and, uh, get a handle on things, so. I don't know.
Well, we've kind of gone into that dry stretch. I've gotten a few calls on washboards and some rough roads. It's just when you get into the driver times, that sets up those conditions.
Yeah, yeah.
On the other side, I got a phone call that said, why do we blade the damn roads so much? We're just grading all our sports.
Well, I don't know what direction to go in that. Either we blade them or we don't.
Yeah, that's just what we, and I kind of see at some point of that, and it's like, you know, we do, if they're gonna bring, tie it back together, you just keep bumping it up.
Uh, that is true, but at some point, probably got him.
He's still got him.
Worthful, it's kind of in the chat. I know, lyric flavor, he's, he's excited about, uh, the detour on Fifty-Nine Street.
I should have sarcasm.
Yeah, well, he, he knows that there's gonna be more traffic going on all them.
Absolutely.
He's anticipating it, so we'll, we'll try and keep ahead of things the best we can, so.
It shuts out Thursday, right?
Fifty-nine? Yes, it does.
Fifty-nine shuts out, that's right.
And, uh, I believe I haven't been out to make sure, but, uh, also, uh, put, apply the dust control, which are areas ahead of it. Uh, I gotta go check and make sure that I got it done last couple of days, uh, might be today that they're gonna do that, so. At least, uh, trying to get ahead of that, so. The bridge crew, they're, they're gonna be, uh, close to wrapping up, uh, down there on Ann Avenue. I think they're struggling getting the last top plate on that structural plate there, uh, it's fighting a little bit, but, uh, and they got a lot of backfilling dirt, maybe to fill in backfill on that, but, uh, it's coming along on, on that structural plate and, uh. And, uh.
I think a job done, now the bridge gone.
You betcha, giving off the system. I'll be honest, I, I, I'm not sure if we've discussed where we're going next. I'm sure Paul's got a plan there.
He's making a. Sure, he's thinking of.
Not sure. We got a lot of plates we could put, or a lot of, uh, culvers we could have them be putting in or move them to the next bridge on the list, so. But, uh, but yeah, roadside crew, they're, they're still out there spraying pretty intense, killing weeds like a madman and, uh.
Then you have the weeds inside.
He does get those weeds, so. From now, Paul sent up a couple things with the, uh. Sent a motion to, motion to approve a supplemental agreement for final design services, but Chrome burns on that Vale Bridge, you open the boomer there, these boomer. And, uh. Not sure it's also discussed.
Forty-eight thousand.
Forty-eight thousand.
That's an increase of forty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty over the original, or when it says supplemental agreement, to me that just means that it's.
You didn't discuss it a lot with me, I, I questioned, so, you know, being supplemental, it, it, it's just. The final design fees in it, or that, uh, I, I'm not sure, uh.
Supplemental to our already contract with them to do some of our bridge inspections, I don't know, yeah, it's good, good boy.
Supplemental agreement for final design.
I mean, they're above and beyond what they're already.
That's what's, that's the way I take it.
Additional agreement, extra agreement, uh, for the final design, so, that's why I would read it, for forty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, so.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, honestly, I didn't discuss that a lot with me.
Yeah, maybe it just stood within here.
We'll make it easy. Related to the bridge replacement.
So supplementing the agreement submitted in accordance back in January tenth of twenty twenty-three. And request for final design services.
Obviously, obviously, it's something that needs to be done in order to put the, uh, project on.
I'll be honest, I don't know if that's standard, if they, they, uh, get to the final design phase and then, uh, even the project fees are discussed at that point. And like I said, Paul could discuss it a whole lot with me, he just said that something come up, and. So Paul had discussed, motion of six things pulled together, so that's what I'm.
Sure.
No.
Well. I imagine. To this supplement, a contract we entered into back and, I believe we got to pull that contract and find exactly what the basis was. I feel confident that Paul would accept that.
Me too, I certainly would, then, go and make sure that.
So I would make a motion to approve the supplemental agreement. Second.
All right, first and second, any further discussion on the supplemental agreement? I'll call a vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anybody post, same sign, Ty, you vote? All right, very good, Chair votes I, we've approved that agreement, thank you for the information. All right. Make sure of the purchase of some maintenance gravel.
Right, right, you got to. However. Roads need a lot more than, uh, what we're, as we were going through the gravel, I think, or going through the piles pretty good, they're putting down roads, uh. And, uh, when or the winter, we must have, uh. Some must have been lost and, uh, and took a little more than anticipated and, uh, oh, that's, uh. Motion approve additional, uh, to go from sixty thousand to eighty thousand, uh, was strapped for pretty strap for gravel here.
Is that a blended mix, you know, acid straps, we've got like ten percent limestone?
Yes, it is a blended mix, uh, the way it looks to me, or.
I, I, that's really worked out well.
I think so, uh, I think guys like it.
Gives it a little bit more of a base, but yet ties it all together.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
For twenty twenty-five delivery and payment, so.
I'll make the motion to approve item number five for twenty ton of maintenance gravel to be purchased.
I told Paul yesterday, grumbles, today is the cheapest we can buy them.
Yep.
It won't be cheaper than most.
It's been a standard.
If it's not going down, that's I'm sat on the floor.
I, I do think that we've been, we're talking that ten percent or fifteen percent blended to limestone in with what Stratford gives us. Makes a pretty good mix.
Yep, we do the mixing.
They do.
Or they do.
They do, they add in ten percent or whatever we choose of limestone in with it, and it just gives you a little bit more of a base, but still.
So we paid the eight oh three for the gravel, then we paid for the limestone that they blended up there depending on how you want it.
This is the message.
The next, yeah.
Okay.
What we're getting. Yep, but then I also have to get it delivered here, so.
Yeah, but they do. I guess I don't know what the plan is for leaving some of that up there, and I'm branding, uh, kind of, you know, give them something all, you know, over the next few months.
This is delivery in twenty twenty-five and payment twenty twenty-five, so we're gonna need it.
This is just an additional twenty thousand for next year, we do have some that we.
Reviews more than we thought we'd want to, so we're.
Right, supposed to get it once the plant waters go down.
Right, right.
So, call the question.
Motion and second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes I.
I, I see, I, I say I.
That thumbs up, all righty. Next, we have a discussion and.
See if I'm gonna say, uh, just initials on that, uh.
We don't need some take action.
And Paul, it's, uh, just anywhere by the, the total there, I, I. Yeah, somewhere by that, and then he changed that to eighty thousand.
Paul said yesterday that it's fortunate that our revenues have been good.
We'll be fine.
He just had that made initial, that goes somewhere by the total, this additional twenty thousand that our revenues continue to be strong, so he. Tell it's a good time to.
Not like we're not gonna ever need some credit.
All right. Not going over. On a consideration for approval of resolution related to the reclassification of a portion of K Avenue from Area Service C Road to Area Service B Road. That's next on, uh. So we are, uh, looking for a motion to, uh, to approve the addition, no, uh, consideration for approval.
Well, it'd be. Just trying to follow through here.
I know, discussion on consideration for approval.
And then we, I don't see it on the agenda anywhere to take action.
That's right.
Yes, that's why he's got on.
Put it on.
Item eight to put on next week's agenda to take action.
Well, I thought it was interesting what you brought up about the. Old, uh, when it passed minutes of how it got from a B to a C period.
And there's, there's a process to get it from a B to a C, and there's a process that gets it from a C to a B.
Correct.
And we've met.
I just want to read that.
I guess, yeah, I, I certainly can read that, that is, when we talked to Paul, Paul mentioned that when he, that in the. You can see the date on this, this was two thousand three, March fourth, two thousand three, that in the early two thousands, they started. Reclassifying these level C roads or just classifying any gravel road, that before it used to just be gravel and dirt. And then the state came out and said, hey, we want you to classify them either A, B, or C level roads, and. The resolution that was passed, uh, on that date stated that, uh, roads may only be classified as area service C by resolution of the board. Upon petition signed by all the landowners adjoining the road. The resolution shall specify the level of maintenance, effort, and the persons who will have access, uh, right to the road. And that was. Done and passed, uh, by the board on that specific road on. The fifteenth of April, two thousand three, and it was signed by all of the landowners that, uh, were around that road at that time, everybody signed. So that's why it became a level C road. And now, I mean, initially, when I read that, I even went over and talked to Colin about it, I'm like, well, currently, then, if we have someone that doesn't want to sign. Does that mean it automatically comes out as a level C road, or it doesn't become a level C road? And Colin told me that, no, Craig, section seven of this or of this, uh, resolution. Has a reclassification, so what happens, how do you reclassify a road? And it says a road with an area service C classification shall retain the classification until such time as a petition for reclassification is submitted to the board. The, the petition shall be signed by one or more adjoining landowners, the board shall approve or deny the request for reclassification. Within sixty days of receipt of the petition. I mean, it doesn't say in there it has to be a written petition, so to me, I guess when Casey came to the board. And verbally said, hey, I'd like to have that reclassified, to me, that's when that sixty day time clock started. That he's asking us as board members to reconsider or, or, or to consider that, uh, we reclassify that from a level C to a level B road. That's the way that I and our county attorney both, uh, interpret what that resolution says. So I guess any, that's.
I agree, I agree.
I agree, full heartedly, I just, you know, I grew up there, looked at it, and it's beautiful up there the way it is, you know. And as far as the classification to the level B, it really is not gonna change. The, the dynamics or the, the look of that strip road there, other than might be some granular material put on there. Through some sort of agreement with. The landowner and the county, so. Well, I, I mean, it's spelled out. And, uh, back in two thousand three, if one person wouldn't have signed it, it would never have been changed, right? And now we have a, a gentleman that is in full construction of a new residence back there, so. I feel it's, are my obligation of maybe this board's to reclassify it to help that gentleman out. Cause he would not have signed it back then, I guess.
We encourage, uh, new construction in Crawford County all over, so that's something that I highlight, you know, which I think is great to have more, uh, of. Building back there than it used to be.
Yeah, I, I.
Be valuable.
The consideration you guys put and figured out the excess traffic. I, I don't, once that house is there, I mean, and Casey will. Will, it, it'll be him and whoever he invites in there, I don't see a big. Party zone happening back there, cause he just run them off, I mean, I, I appreciate everybody's input on that.
I do too.
I think it's our obligation to reclassify it back to a level B.
And the safety issues of having that gate shut when there's an emergency back there and, uh, you know, your home every time you want to go with your. Back and forth with groceries, the gate's locked, it just doesn't make sense to have a door lock or gate locked to get to the where you call home, it doesn't. That's where he's chosen to build a beautiful home, so we have to encourage that.
Thank you.
Did I interject?
Dave's interjected, right?
Briefly. The, uh, when, when Craig was reading through that, it said that he, uh, that if like Casey's petitioning, it had to be assigned to Doc. I'm pretty sure that's how I heard that. So would that mean, I mean, I'm, I'm just kind of going on a technicality within that, would have future evidence that it was actually petitioned, the board was petitioned, other dis. So, I mean, I just wanted to bring that up, I was, I was hearing that as Greg, Craig was reading.
You are correct, Ty, is that it, it does, I guess I took the first part of it, says at such time as a petition for reclassification is submitted to the board. And then the next sentence, you are correct, it says the petition shall be signed by one or more adjoining landowners. So I guess that makes the oral part of it, um, mute, that, uh, it needs to be a written petition. Um, to, to us, and it says then the board shall approve or deny the request for reclassification within sixty days of receipt of the petition. Thank you for clarifying.
So then we need a written petition.
Right. What did the, what did the petition look like that was all signed as by? No. I mean. Okay, so.
Even Wendell signed it.
Yep. Okay, so he would just need to basically. Take this and ask the exact opposite of what this does.
It's only, it says once a petition, doesn't say that all landowners have to sign.
I mean, right, I think he could just say. Dear board supervisors, please consider this as a petition to reclassify K Avenue to a level B. Sign it and give it to us, and that's it, that's how I see it, yeah. I don't think it has to be anything.
At least we know the process, and we know that we need that, so then we have sixty days, and then we can make that consideration and vote on it.
Right.
Guess I'd like to know if there's any input.
I would like to ask how you formally object to it, the minutes that were done for June twenty-fifth. Said there was no, I, I believe that was stated that that was just a motion in opening the hearing, but, I mean. When that time comes, do we just stipulate orally that there's an objection to it?
We've taken written objections or comments too, we can be.
It doesn't matter, I mean, according to what I read, it looks like it can be oral on that part, if we're objecting to it, it looks like it can be written or oral. That one specified that.
That's when we start the meeting, any written.
But now we, the clock is changed, and it starts as soon as Casey puts, uh, written petition in there. Thanks for your due diligence, Ty.
You're right, I mean, uh, I guess, you know, when you're, when you're on the board, it's, and you pass something like these guys did in two thousand and three, you wonder, hey, do future boards follow? What we put in place? And so, uh, it's nice to see, or it's nice to be able to go back and look to see what exactly was passed, so we are following what that board passed at that time.
What they intended.
And the description of the roads. Has also changed a little bit, I mean, I have that in this file where it initially in two thousand and three. It was a little bit, the C road classification was written a little differently than a little bit later when they signed another one in two thousand and four. And I do have that information here, you guys don't have that, we, we.
There, do we get a copy of that?
So I think we got, you picked up that copy.
We had.
So you should have that one, the original one, you might not, we have that copy of that one, so I, I mean, I can give you that, it doesn't matter, that one. Makes that one null, that nullifies that original one since it was changed in two thousand and four, so, um, you can have it or not, it doesn't matter, I can get it.
Have they got the new signage up, I went out there the day of the meeting, and there was, but the signage is up and everything, like over the Fourth of July, things were.
I believe, I saw it myself, I believe so, uh.
Ben, I have a question, I just have another question, there's a sign there, we signed the nine-one-one sign, it's right at that gate, it says. Two seven, two nine, or what, whatever.
Yeah, I've seen the.
Is that what it's going to be, does, I just have a question, where did that go when it's a B or a C road? Um, and for the emergency part that Jean mentioned, and that Casey mentioned at the last meeting.
I don't, I'm not, I'm sorry, I was talking.
I don't know, the nine-one-one thing. Location that Iowa code states an Iowa one sign has to be at, but where it was placed was.
By the green gate.
Right, which I seen that and I thought too, well, but if I was the first responder trying to find that location.
If they go to Dean's or my house, they still won't go back to Casey, so I mean, so Casey's point was well taken that, that they. As being just attested to, and I'm just bringing that up. For you guys.
If the item was, when instruction's completed, it might get moved to his driving, that's what I would.
Well, they can't, they couldn't put it anywhere till you get this here.
Right.
Uh, and back to the petition, I, I don't know, I think Casey might have signed a petition with Paul before that last, I mean, I'm not sure.
Get a roll.
Excuse me, Ty?
He's got a roll.
Oh, got a roll? All right, thanks for your input, appreciate it, that's why you needed to, or, did you get to?
Yeah, Ben, do you know if there was any written petition from Casey that?
I, I'm not familiar with it, no, I want to make, no, but to ask Paul, like I said, he's dealt mostly with Paul.
I checked, it's a foreign guy, yeah. Submitted something, right? I can give you guys what Carroll County does on the situations, but they're in a county, there's a basis for everything. Carroll County, they just have, and the landowner paid to get the, the road up to Cove, and then the county maintained it. Or Casey and his family, it's not just my son, it's his family, it hurts. It hurts me bad, he doesn't want one tree taken, they know that. There wouldn't be no ten point in ten years, my son is here, and I gotta come to the board. If it, everybody says that's a great idea, but they don't want it in their backyard, and I hope there's good feelings after this. If it, everybody says that's a great idea, but they don't want it in their backyard, and I hope there's good feelings after this is done. He introduced himself to ready. He introduced himself. It's his wife and my grandson, they're not just my son. To go through this is so sad. Who on that board would want that gate with the possibility of being locked? And no nurse diversity in that house? When my grandson is fifteen and drives to school, I'm afraid they expect him to get out of that gate. The things I've done for this community of our company, he's done for this country, this county, that they have this brought up. I understand nobody wants height, there's a house being built across from me, we're taking a cookie slip building. Look at what Carroll County's done, look at what Manona County's done to get people to come back to me. To sit here and worry about gate, those people aren't going to turn around and near drive, like now we're going to turn around and Casey's drive, when they have no problem with that, they'll handle it. But I just don't understand why anybody would want that for a young couple. It's sad, it's really sad, everything, it's sad. And I voiced my opinion.
This could have been a murder in the first place, Casey would have just come and talked to us. No, Casey just got mad and let the law, must change the road.
No.
I have no problem working out. I told Casey, one hundred percent, I would leave the gates open.
But why would the gates even have to be there more?
They don't have to be, I don't care if they're there or not.
Yeah.
All I'm asking is to put a couple signs up there.
But there's signs now.
Signs are there.
Or let's move the gates down to the bottom, this bottom of K Avenue. Would you guys be okay with that, and a chance they were locked for you guys?
There's no one case.
K R.
We're not getting any access at all.
K R, we, this was the original C road. Designation was pointed upon us in the first place. So we found the value of it. After it was put there, but Elizabeth wanted it a C road at that time, that was how that was set up.
And by state statute, I mean, all level C roads have to have a gate.
Absolutely, it says.
That's right, that's why, well, they have to. Right, and by, and it's just level C from that point. To where Casey's building, that's why the gate sits right there.
Yes.
It's not a level C road to your.
He could have petitioned for a class A.
Right.
He could have petitioned for a class A.
And that has.
And then, and then the county would have to maintain it. He wants to keep it the way it is.
It's beautiful back there and.
Oh, he sold us it, right.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to change it, build it back in there, just.
Oh, yeah, the gate. So we just have to go through the process, correct?
So it looks like it's on the agenda next week. Um. I mean, if Casey hasn't submitted something in writing, certainly tell him to, and I would think by next Wednesday or Tuesday, we'll have a. We'll have it on the agenda.
Yep. For the, to take action. Today it's not on as a take action item on Paul's, it's just a discussion and consideration, so take action will be on the agenda for next week. Correct?
Depending on the petition, we need to have that first.
Right.
Okay. That's the easy thing, there may be, there may be one down in the office.
Petition, I I guess I can't say, but.
I didn't get that, that's thirty nine days, I'd be. Close to.
Well, we don't have to wait for sixty days, we just have sixty days, I will say that if we have something written. From Casey either on file or by next Tuesday, we will decide next Tuesday.
We have, we can't. Uh, make it go longer than sixty days, we can't, for long, it it has to be.
There's no reason of waiting.
That was to keep the board from, fascinating, so. So that discussion is, we'll have it on the agenda for next week. Thank you so much.
We have, we have.
Ask your resolution.
Public hearing.
Already had.
Post-public, it has to be. We have public hearing, not the one that's going to make that action. As well, make sure we got the rest of our agenda.
All right, so you have that to have it on our agenda as a take action next week.
It'll be on Paul's agenda to take action.
Okay.
Okay. Alrighty, so we've taken care of a resolution from the third, we've taken care of, so we're down to discussion.
Anything else, before we move on?
No, I don't.
Did you answer my question about the floral objection to it? Because Terry, when I looked at last June twenty fifth minutes, I'm just trying to go back to.
Is that what it said?
Yeah, I think.
I mean, that was a public hearing.
It was.
The way I read it, it looked like promotion and the I part of it was wasn't objected to, and then you had. Then there's stipulated discussion, I just want to go down on record.
Yeah.
We're still objecting to it.
Right, and let me go back and look at that, because maybe we need to amend those.
Amendment.
I, you know.
I'm glad you brought that, it was two weeks ago, right, was when the hearing was?
It was in last week's paper, Dennis' paper, so I just didn't know if I needed to formally, because we did just reference something from two thousand and three, I just want. This to to be. Um, that.
The motion and the the vote.
I know, it's it's, it's a moot point whether we object to it or not, but.
It was to open and close the public hearing.
I just want it, I want it on the record that we are.
Public record. Absolutely.
That's fine.
For the future, for, you know, watching, you know, from two thousand and three to now, this occurring, and who knows how many different landowners. They're here, they are anywhere, and what may transpire, I mean.
Right, right.
I mean, you know, I don't have any objections to Casey building out there, obviously. Um, but um, I do know a lot of bad things happen out in our neck of the woods, just had somebody. Decided on a straight road, go into our land and, you know, try to get back out and drive right over our fence, you know? Um, it happens all the time, and so that's why I want this officially, that there's an objection, because it might come up again. In a different way.
I think we'll just have to note that in the minutes next week.
So that we can, I mean, because I'm keeping the record, I mean, like I, like I said, I.
So I think Kyle, Kyle's right, is that our previous motions were just to go into a public hearing, and then come out of the public hearing.
I get it, after, after we read it, but I just.
That we never decided anything or had a vote in within the public hearing, we just voted to have it.
Yeah, I just didn't understand how, since it was my first supervisory meeting I ever attended, I just wanted to make.
Well, you're welcome to come back.
And we always have to ask her if she, if anybody wrote with an objection, so are there any written objections?
Well, this one said you could orally, orally.
Right, right, exactly, and you were there present.
We won't do that next week when we vote, we won't ask for any oral or written objections.
That's why I'm addressing it right now.
Exactly, but Terry could certainly document that in the minutes, that you were present, and you have, you know, you did not agree with the.
Because even in those minutes, it didn't, she wrote our names down, and we read that during, but. It didn't, like, when I look at the high school, at the school minutes. You know, it says where Wolf was there, or it says the 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 guests that were there, and in all these, it doesn't, so I just didn't know what it was.
Okay.
And we can amend those minutes to reflect that if we need to.
And that's why we always try to get the folks that are on Zoom as iPhone one, you know, who are you at our public hearings, when. We almost feel like we have to take them out if they don't say who they are, because we need to identify who was here, what their reason for being, and. Whether there's an objection or a comment.
I appreciate you guys very definitely driving back there and and just giving it.
We drove back there, yeah.
You're dealing, you're checking it out, and I I really, really appreciate that.
And putting the signs up, you know, to make sure that people are aware that this is not a road for everybody to be driving on, it's not ready for people to drive on, it's not a graded road, it's not.
So I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, we appreciate you, thank you.
Thanks for that. Still, look, the nine one one, uh, does he have it?
Yeah, he would be the, yeah.
Okay.
I would probably want the nine one one.
I guess they would, they put the signs up.
I would guess that sign would all the way back to. And I think he'd probably put it at that location currently, just. If the gates were shut, nobody would drive back there to see that nine one one sign, obviously. Obviously, but if you're in the. Them not, them signs are not just randomly numbers on there, I mean, that's.
Has to have a rhyme or a reason, you know.
There is a question, so that. I don't know what that number was, two seven five three and whatever like that, so that's. Five point. Point five three miles east of two hundred and seventieth street is where that driveway is, so.
Oh, that's interesting, I didn't know.
That's how the numbers are, and if we go on north to south, the little numbers start on the north side of the county, and they go, so like twenty one. Forty is X amount of miles south of the north. Part of Crawford County, so.
But some of them don't make sense.
Because I'd probably want to confirm with that, where are the correct placement of them?
On twenty five, twenty dollar road.
Yep.
Went across, because there wasn't a house there, it was just a building, and then the building had a number, and then when they put the house. So it's kind of, it it.
Two different numbers, two different drivers.
You could get lost, but it took a long time for them to get the number out to the new house, so anyway. It's either here or there.
Thanks to COVID, to numbering, getting those blades are not as easy as they used to be as well.
I can spell this.
Anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Like I said. Yeah, just see if you can, in in that room, section eight, Paul's got his petition. Signed and shoved in with the the history of that chalked road, so.
I'll take a look, yeah, and if it doesn't, like I said, I will get in contact with Casey and then tell them, yeah, we, it's from you.
Not that fancy, doesn't that summarize, doesn't like that?
I'm sure K R is probably already on the phone with Casey.
Yeah, I guarantee it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, man.
We'll have it taken care of. Alrighty, so we have a discussion, take action concerning the compensation board, I'm not sure who put that on the agenda.
I think, I think.
You all wanted it on there in two weeks, in two weeks. Well, that was a man.
That was two weeks ago.
So, good memory, Terry.
Well, no, I was reminded, because I think we forgot to, and I had sent out information to the other elected officials, being.
Okay.
That the board is intending on discussing this again in two weeks, and.
Alright.
Then sure to help us to remember.
I had noticed.
To get it on the agenda, and then on my mark.
I had looked at it, and I didn't see it, and it was amended, so. Alrighty, so.
Yep.
Okay, what's the thought of the board, what is your, what are you thinking about?
You know, I've read it too, while they talked, we talked about this between meetings with all the supervisors there, and. There, the majority of them. All were in favor of reinstating the comp board, has a layer of checks and balances, uh. You had a board that's gonna do their due diligence to come up with the numbers and to recommend back to the supervisors. I guess it. We talked about. We seem still adjust to what we feel is necessity or what we need to, as how far our budget works. Um. I'm kind of in that camp, I I feel like the comp board that we have did a very good job last year. Came to us with their numbers, what they're, what they studied and looked into, and of course, we did reduce it back. Um. I think the fear a little bit is, it's just in the supervisors' hands that, not that we would do that, but.
Yeah, think about other boards also, and the.
Where's the misconception at?
Right, right, the perception that we're favoring one office over the other, where, you know, if we do reinstate the comp board, that that. Would help with that perception, that we did have a side board that came up with the homework and the the work that shows. What was recommended or raises.
But the difference with the new uh. Code is that you don't have to, and it, we always had that everybody has to go down the same, but now with the new law, you don't have to go down the same.
No, we can, no, we can independently raise low or whatever, but I still feel like it's the starting point of what the comp board is gonna give us.
Just when, you know, the back of the blue came in, and they had that, it all had to go down the same, and that made it very difficult to.
I mean, I'm in favor, because what what they said, I guess, as far as keeping the comp board, I would like to have. The ability to talk to the comp board prior to the meeting, so that we can tell them, look. The chairperson usually does? Okay. Um, just just to say like, um. And I'm just, this is hypothetical, okay?
Yep.
But if we are, if our rankings as far as our department heads, if one is. Really high in the state, and the other ones are really low, we say, look, we want to address these two right here. We don't need to do anything here, because we're already.
Right.
Either paying enough or overpaying or whatever, but here, we're not paying enough, so we want you to focus on trying to get these. Back up to what you would say would be state average or comp or whatever terminology you want to use. Um, and have that conversation with them, so they are aware that. When I come to the board of supervisors, I want to be able, if this is what they want to address, then that's what we're gonna address. That's it.
We could do that.
Okay. I.
I'm in favor of keeping it, because it just. They've got shoulder work and everything, and they can bring their recommendations to us. And we can act on our own cornerway, but I'm not sure, but I don't know if it's ever been done, we say. Check your work. We may not agree with everything, and just say, hey, can you reconvene?
The state requires them to check, have their work, or us, if we decide not to have it, and we have to show it, so.
We have to show it.
Ultimately. I think it's a. A a key part to the, to the process of raises or adjustments of salary for elected officials. Because I mean, it takes out. I don't know, they got, it's just another layer of transparency and and voices being heard.
Have. The other elected officials weighed in.
Maybe, you guys don't want, I don't know, maybe you guys don't be.
They knew this meeting was gonna be today, and I mean, they get the agenda, so. You guys, you're part of it, what's your thoughts?
I'd account, I'd call it. I I feel like it is. A good deal.
Right, I think we need to keep it, I think it's gonna be beneficial to the. To you in decision making.
And all of our reps are also taxpayers, so it's giving that voice as well. I mean, it's not just the board saying, you're going to do this. And like you said before, there, they did their diligence, and they're showing you guys what they're proposing and why. So it takes more legwork off of you as well.
Yeah, the concern that I got, you know, was that they do all the legwork and we would not pay any attention to it, so that's, that was a concern of one of the representatives. Or that they didn't want to keep the job if we weren't going to. Listen to what they said, look at what they presented, take that.
Basis changing on that. Board. Year, I don't know yearly, but. It's not always the same representatives, and some people choose not to be involved in it anymore, or. Or you guys as elected officials get to choose who you want, so maybe if you felt like the last person you had was. Maybe not the player that you were hoping for, you get to pick whoever you want, you know, we don't, that's the uniqueness of it, we don't.
Who typically said so at that meeting? I think my office.
Your office, I think.
Okay, that's right, nothing will change with that, I mean.
No.
It could. But it probably won't, why would it? Do you think our ISAC resolution sample, resolution to reinstate the comp board is sufficient? I don't know, I just, I printed it this morning, I didn't really read it. I would think we made it fairly straightforward of.
So since on July first, all the comp boards were disbanded.
Correct, at this exact moment.
So if you want to. Uh, have one, you have to pass a.
Resolution.
Resolution, then is the comp board. Um. Once it's back in place, is it the exact same role that it'll be for? Or just it's something that we can dictate as to what its role is, or. What rules does the comp board have if they're all disbanded on July first, and we say, no, we want our comp board back, then they're in the exact same role as they were. Prior to July one, or?
If those elected officials want to keep their representative, they can change. Is that what you're talking about? I don't know what you're saying.
Like what he's saying is how the. Through Iowa code, previously. The comp board worked within that arena of Iowa code.
Right.
But now that Iowa code says. It's no longer, does each county get a set criteria on what the comp board gets to work around? Is that?
That's what I'm saying.
I think Iowa code still gives direction of the compensation board.
I printed it out, I don't think it.
I think the only difference is after the fact, after they get the recommendation, the change was our ability, instead of having to draw them all down equally. The major change would be that we can't.
Right, I'm just happy, I I agree with you a hundred percent, I'm glad that now we have the capability in my. Would be scenario, if, you know, before, you always had to treat everybody the same, so if you had one elected official that was.
Right.
The higher paid in the rankings, and you're like, I wanted to bring that one down, I don't want to give that one as much, I'm stuck, I can't.
Well, you gotta trigger it, or whatever, that's ranked. Eight of.
Right.
Eight of, right, and then you got supervisors that are ranked number one.
Right.
It was state rankings.
Exactly, we need to fix that, we need to fix that.
Right, you can't have everybody try to.
Prior could not do that without.
Right, everybody getting hurt by trying to take one, yeah, it's very difficult. Remember my first meeting trying.
And and the comp board now has that ability too.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
I think they've always had that ability. They're gonna be sure, they did, they have, they've always had the ability to do that.
Carroll County, a couple of years back, it was, I don't know, but it was the auditor, the treasurer.
Yep.
Attorney.
Okay, how come they never did that?
Because.
There's always exactly the same.
They just didn't, they want to, you never think they're, they're like.
That's right.
So the comp board did have that, though.
I do, I do know why that happened.
Sheriff got a higher increase, remember that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, not just we just back blue, but before that.
Right, they were, they recognized that disparity years ago, the sheriff, they thought was less than. So. I mean, they were trying to do it incrementally, bring the sheriff up to a wage that was more comparable. And, you know, when I first got on it, Jim got like five percent or something at the time, and the rest of the electric officials got three or something like that, but.
Before the.
They've always had that option.
The compensation board can convene them, they all have good footage, all the races that they were working together, you know.
I mean, historically, looking back, the sheriff was always the highest paid elected official in the county for many, many years. Prior to us having.
Always my attorney.
Yes.
Prior to us having. And once I have cable, I'll be.
Exactly, right.
So, okay, if we approve this today, are we approving this with that sample, using that sample? I mean, you gotta, you can set terms of the offices, have you?
Right, and the armed board.
We've all looked at the resolution.
I have, I have.
I don't want to put it back on the.
I have.
Next one, get a copy of this resolution or read through the copy of.
This, you know, I was surprised that it was take action, because.
I think she gives the ability.
And we don't have to, we just have to.
Yeah, it was on the last time to take action also, I believe.
Alright, so we've had the discussion, it seems like.
So we'll, we'll have Terry email us all the resolution. And we'll put it back on this resolution.
It's in that ISAC. The ISAC email that came out.
I had it.
The resolution's in there.
So we, remember that?
Yep, I, I could find it here. I printed it so I could, unless I've grown it out.
Yeah, I'm sure I got that.
I'll look back.
Right, just skim through it a bit, like I.
Yes, I didn't see it on there until this.
Boy, either way, we can all take a week, read it, if we have any questions about it.
Talk to people like we always do.
And put it on the agenda for.
But we make the motion, people don't, oh, yeah, you're walking out.
And if you're, you're curious, the sheriff's salary in eighteen ninety two was three hundred dollars a month.
Flatter.
Whoa, alright, very good work the auditor made.
Which, which, uh. Which in today's dollars would be twelve thousand five hundred dollars a year.
Sounds good, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alrighty, so we'll have that back on the agenda. Citizens input, we've got some folks out on Zoom to say, Bonnie, got your hand up?
Well.
Bonnie, you have your hand up?
Sun meter.
Can you hear me now? Sorry.
Yes.
Um, good morning. I got on the Zoom a little late. And I didn't hear all of what Craig said about the I U B order, but I just wanted to bring a couple of things to your attention. Uh, one is that the utilities commission, it's the I U C now, uh, did not. Grant a permit to Summit. They granted them a conditional permit. And they have several hoops they have to jump through yet. And one of them, the main one is, they cannot begin construction until they have permits in the Dakota, in North Dakota, South Dakota. Minnesota and Nor, and Nebraska. Um, and the big one is South Dakota, because their first permit was denied. And they have not even filed an application for the, for a new hearing on a permit, and that's gonna take at least a year. So there's that. And then there are other regulations that they have to meet, and they have to meet all the water. Their water needs, which is tremendous, and we'll see how that works out. Uh, also, I, yesterday was the deadline for groups to file for reconsideration with the utilities commission. And several groups, including our group, the Geordie Landowners, have filed for reconsideration with the board. Uh, based on the fact that our attorneys, several attorneys for the counties. Um, the Sierra Club, various landowners have all, uh, found legal problems with the utility board ruling, and they've asked for reconsideration. And that's gonna take, I don't know, a month or so to work through that. And if denied, then this, then we start the appeal process in the courts. And that starts with the district courts, the state supreme court if necessary, and maybe even the United States Supreme Court. So what I'm trying to say here is that this is far from over. If anybody thinks it's a done deal, it is not. It's an ongoing battle, and I just wanted to make that clear to the board. That's all. Thank you.
Bonnie, thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie.
For the update, yep. Very good, you know, I kind of knew those. So anybody else in our citizen input? Cindy, got your hand up?
Yeah, you were talking about the ordinance that Robert sent to you that you're gonna send to Colin. I just wanted to say that it it's fine to put that in place, but all the survey work for Crawford County has been completed already. So that ordinance really wouldn't help Crawford right now, but as far as the future, it wouldn't hurt to put something like that in place, because. If this pipeline does go through, we will now be a pipeline corridor. That's pretty well known, that they'll just put more and more pipelines. Going through Crawford, so that's something to think about. But I was wondering where you're at as far as the resolution on the inimick domain. Um, goes. I, I, the last I heard, I thought it was with Colin. Any updates on that?
We haven't talked to Colin, see, uh, because we did, may look here and see.
Cindy, the cop, question, the resolution in regards to surveying. I mean, they came out, did preliminary surveying through the tracks, but. Once construction would begin, them surveyors would have to come back again and do the alignment of those pipelines. And I think that's how I understood this resolution would help. Control or at least let you as a landowner know that you have people out there putting stakes in. I I guess that's what I deem this survey resolution to help with. I could be wrong, that's why I wanted to get it to Colin and have him. See if it's even worth setting up, because, I mean, there's always gonna have to be somebody out there making sure they're going where they're supposed to be going.
Well, exactly. And that would be part of the inspector's job, as far as that way. The surveys, what what Summit has done is more like the cultural. Survey to make sure there's no artifacts, things like that, that those, there's four surveys that they did previous. That to, they had to do that for the I U C. So those have been completed, but what you're talking about, I agree, I mean, it's, if you call them surveyor, you can just, at that point, it's Summit.
This is different inspectors. The the surveyors are the guys that are standing out there and look through their little scopes, and they tell the guy, go six inches that way, or. Whatever, that's that's what I'm envisioning.
They're gonna have to receive written permission from the landowners, saying the exact time and date of the survey activities will occur, and which parcels of land are to be surveyed, including in handwritten signature of approval from landowners.
So. Yeah, I understand what you're, what you're saying, but I talked to Robert, and this ordinance, so what they're talking about. Was basically constructive for the phase two landowners. We're working with those counties right now. That are just starting the process. They have no idea about their rights for surveys, so that's what this one was kind of entailed to. But I like where Kyle's going, as far as the more things we can have in place, the better off we all are as far as.
It's not gonna stop, I'm saying Cindy, it's just letting you as a landowner know that, hey, I got these guy, this crew's out here working on my property. I mean, I think, I think they should come knock on your door anyway, but to me, this resolution would just say, hey, gotta go talk to Cindy. And let them know that we're gonna be out here setting some stakes out through here, so.
And since it appears they didn't do it previously, it'd be nice to make sure that the understanding in Crawford County is we expect that. My thought.
But here again, I want to vet it by Colin, because it seems like every time we come up with something, you know, the I U B or the federal government or whatever supersedes anything we could try, so.
Certainly looks so.
Uh, unfortunately. Thank, thanks for your input. I, as far as the resolution. That you were talking about is, just to kind of reiterate that we're against imminent domain, that resolution, the one similar to what Shelby County passed.
Exactly, it's a lot more thorough than than what you guys passed originally. It has, you know, different legal cases cited in the resolution. It would just help our case further down in the legal courts.
So even though we're just, and I'm not, I'm trying to understand, I don't, I don't mean any disrespect, Cindy, it's just. We we initially stated our case that we're against imminent domain, so we're just gonna, you. You would like to see a formal resolution. Restate now.
Yes, it's a lot more thorough. What you did is kind of like a generic versus a very specified, or, I mean, objection. Yours, you're, what you put in originally was just very, very generic. It was good. I mean, it got the point across, but this one is a lot more thorough. And it, it tells the courts why inimit domain is wrong.
So Cindy, since the I U B or I U C has already ruled, what do you see the point of saying, I don't agree with that? I mean, we didn't agree with it before.
Because this is going to be for further legal battles when we get into a fair court.
So be be just to help the people that are continuing to battle the lawsuit, to to appeal the lawsuit or the decision by the I U C.
Correct, and in the, in the future too. I mean, this is not just, just for this one, but it would also be for future cases for inimit domain.
It brings up all of the other cases of the United States Supreme Court, uh, and all sorts of different points. So if we do that exact one, is that? If Colin has this.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll check with him and see.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, when I get done with this and see where is that.
The board's always been against the imminent domain.
Always.
Exactly, that's why I kind of thought this resolution would be a piece of cake to go through, because you guys have so firm on the inimit domain side of things.
We'll seek legal advice.
And if we can do anything to help down the road, it's, it's something we must do, so I will see where is that with it, because he does have this, so. See if that gets on the agenda for next week, hopefully.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome, Cindy. Alright, we just have Vicki and Michelle left on citizens input. We have no one else in here, so.
Sherry, you got anything?
Alright, alright, so the next thing is the adjournment on our agenda.
Second.
Any objection? Alright.
Don't forget tomorrow, we're brilliant at the Paris, ten o'clock.
It's gonna be nice and cool, so that'll be fun. Then on Thursday, I have to call Vigo.
Call one year.
The senior citizens.
I did just email the comp board.
I didn't want to know what you.
Last I got an email you too, so.
Yep, I got it.
And I just had to just have Colin just look at it. So that's right, I think it's pretty straight.
So we're saying, yep, well, that's what's happening. Reimagine the wheel then, so, alright, we've been adjourned.
Holy fuck, not even in the clinic.
Alrighty.
I was afraid it was gonna come to the, but, yeah, because they were getting you, everybody. Yep, yep. I said, if you had to open, you would just fill pipe, pipe some water over to, hey, there was something I wondered. What are you doing Thursday?